Hi.
No, that's not about that issue. I don't know. Um, going to really talk. I have to say you too.
That's why I had to.
I would like to call the April tenth, twenty twenty four city council meeting to order. If you would please rise while we do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the, please call the rule.
Mayor Whitney.
Is ab- absent.
Hutchings.
Here.
Nelson.
Uh, Mr. Nelson will be here. He's just running a little late.
Chilson, present. Carrie.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Cassidy. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I am also present.
Whackler. Your quorum has increased.
Oh, good, good. It was inadvertent. Yeah, thank, thank you. So approval of the agenda and consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, the March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four council meeting minutes. Under new business, we have ordinance twenty four dash sixteen. Amending Soldatna Municipal Code Title Eight, Chapter eight point oh six, disposable plastic shopping bags introduced by Chilson and Parker. Public hearing set for April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four. Resolutions, we have resolution twenty four dash nine authorizing the city manager to apply to the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for a loan increase from the Alaska Clean Water Fund for Phase Two construction portion of the BioSolids Dewatering Replacement Project introduced by the city manager. Resolution two thousand twenty four dash ten authorizing the city manager to execute a road construction agreement between the City of Soldatna and Five D Investments LLC, also introduced by the city manager, and that is your consent agenda.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do have.
We do have a few attendings today, but no one has raised their hand wishing to speak.
All right, and for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App user, app users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your phone. Having no one else to see, to speak, this is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. We do have one presentation with prior notice tonight. Chief Meek, if you would, please, we are going to be swearing in Soldatna Police Officer Zachary Ulrich. If you would come forward, please, sir, and the chief will provide you with your oath of office.
Of folks I'm very excited about today, not very often do you get to have one of your own sworn in as an officer for your own city. Zachary Ulrich grew up here. He started his own business here, went to school here. He became a police explorer here within the city of Soldatna. So when he put in to be a police officer here, we had high aspirations and he got shot down the first time. Uh, got beat out. Uh, having determination, he came back, proceeded through our hiring process and stands before you today. Uh, we'll be swearing him in, giving him his oath of office today. Raise your right hand. Just repeat after me, okay? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Zachary Ulrich.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
To uphold and defend?
To uphold and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the State of Alaska?
Of the State of Alaska.
And the charter?
And the charter.
And ordinances?
And ordinances.
Of the City of Soldatna?
And the City of Soldatna.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And partially.
Perform and discharge?
Perform and discharge?
My duties?
My duties.
As police officer?
As police officer?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my abilities.
I take this oath freely?
I take this oath freely?
Without reservation?
Without reservation?
And promise?
And promise?
To act at all times?
To act at all times?
In accordance?
In accordance?
With the law?
With the law?
Enforcement Code of Ethics?
Code of, Law Enforcement Code of Ethics?
Furthermore?
Furthermore?
I recognize?
I recognize?
The badge of my office?
The badge of my office?
As a symbol?
As, of a symbol?
Of public faith?
Of public faith?
And I will honor?
And I will honor?
And protect?
And protect?
The public trust?
The public trust?
In serving this community?
And serving this community?
And fulfilling my fundamental?
And fulfilling my fundamental?
Law enforcement duties?
Law enforcement duties?
All right, crimey firing itself.
Well, welcome to the team, officer. We are now down to public comments and presentations. Thank you, Chief Meek. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item that is not appearing on the agenda? Come, come forth if you would state your name and address for the record. And I do know there's a number of you in attendance to talk about Little League and that will, we, you'll be able to address that when we get to that part of the agenda. Thank you, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Rebecca Heinsberger, Kaseelaw, Alaska, Box four four zero, Kaseelaw, Alaska, nine nine six one zero. So, um, yeah, I have an issue I want to speak about. I approached Ms. Bauer today and we talked a little bit about it. And it has to do with the Soldatna City Codes. It's nine point ten point zero one zero, which might ring a bell because I'm sure this is not the first time somebody's spoken about this, but this is addressing the situation in our town with adult adult performances, adult readings, entertainment, all that kind of thing. This is what the code addresses and it speaks about adult cabaret, but as Ms. Power, Bauer pointed out to me, it, this code is addressing brick and mortar buildings that can house adult theater, adult performances, activities. The particular thing called adult cabaret is male or female impersonators. This was written before we had the culture that we have now. This was more addressing, I can tell from the code that it's addressing things that have gone on for decades, like Charlie's out there. This is, doesn't really apply very well to the concerns that a lot of us have in the community now. That is a different format. Because the format now is transient performances, libraries, churches, schools, where these things are going on. And there is no brick and mortar building. But the phenomena is still taking place. So, all right, I only have three minutes, right? So to get to the point, I would like to encourage the city council to entertain the idea of updating this code to reflect the kind of protections we want to see for our young people, particularly in this community, to not have these kind of events happening in publicly funded places where children are. And I think that's the intent here, but it doesn't address the current type of situations going on. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. So my purpose in being here is to say that we need something in Soldatna that will address what is happening and protect our kids, the same way the intent was here to protect kids from uh, these kind of adult events that went on in a building. So that's pretty much what I want to communicate. I hope that that you will take this seriously because there's a lot of people that feel the same way I do. I'm not just a single stick in the haystack. So just encourage you to redo these codes and update them for better protection for these temporary events that go on. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? And Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody attending by Zoom that's raised their hand?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no one else that wishes to speak on that, that brings us to Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? Assemblymember Cox, thank you.
Thank you, Tyson Cox, uh, Assembly District Four, Soldatna. Um, I was just gonna remind folks that our next meeting next week, next Tuesday, will be in Seward. And so if you want to participate, you can either come to Seward or there is a Zoom link that you can find online and you can participate over Zoom. We do take testimony always over Zoom. We will be having our first budget work session. That one's going to consist of mostly east side stuff. Um, we have Bear Creek Fire Service Area, Eastern Peninsula Highway Emergency Service Area, Seward Bear Creek Flood Service Area. And that will all take place at the Community Library in Seward on the sixteenth. And then I was just going to mention for the council or anyone in the public, if there is something particular you're wanting to watch for coming up in our budget sessions is you can go on to, to the Borough website and look for it. You can email or text me and I can help keep you informed on when those ones will be coming up. One of the other things we have is we do have a land sale coming up on May eleventh, twenty twenty four at ten AM at Soldatna High School Auditorium. Folks can go and register at nine AM for that. It will be an outcry auction. And then I was going to mention that two of the items that I mentioned last time will be up for debate and public hearing while we're in Seward. That would be the public records and requests amendments that we're making. And then the amendment to, for civil trespass and how that would be issued. Um, and then I just wanted to end with congratulating Zach or should we say Officer Ulrich? Many of you may also know him from, from Zach's, Zach's lawn care services that he had. Um, he did that for a long time. He did it while he was in high school. A lot of people don't know, but he built a very good business while he was in high school, which was pretty amazing. But now he's an officer for Soldatna, which is even more amazing. So anyways, I congratulate him with that.
Thank you, Assemblymember Cox. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you for presentation. And I see no legislators here. They're all busy working in Juneau right now. So it brings us down to public hearings. We start with ordinances. The first one is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero eight, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by twenty six thousand, six hundred and fifty seven dollars in the airport fund and four hundred and twenty six thousand, five hundred and seven in the Airport Improvements Capital Fund for construction administration and inspection efforts on the twenty nineteen runway rehabilitation project brought to us by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Second? A second to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Carey. And report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I'm going to ask our airport manager to report on this and the next item, which also involves funding at the airport.
Thank you. Uh, this ordinance and the companion ordinance, uh, they appropriate, they appropriate supplemental funding for our runway seven two five rehabilitation project. It also appropriates match funding. This was the recommended path by FAA at the conclusion of our project during the closeout phase. The supplemental grant was required and this is simply some housekeeping. The total project cost is six point nine million and the local match is about forty thousand. So we recommend new pass.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? I see nobody here in council chambers, anybody on, and nobody by Zoom. It brings us back to council. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Carey?
Thank you. I move to amend ordinance twenty twenty four double O eight by adding a new section two, which would read as following. That the city manager is authorized to sign a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the runway seven twenty five rehabilitation phase two project and renumber the existing section two as section three.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson. Can I have a report from Mr. Cornelius, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for adding that amendment. Uh, it just makes it abundantly and explicitly clear for checking grant, uh, grant boxes. So just makes our legislation match exactly what FAA would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any council questions? Seeing none, can we have a vote on the amendment, please?
Whackler?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. And on a five zero, the amendment passes and we have now been joined by Councilmember Noble Cassidy. Thank you for, I didn't see you come in.
Cassidy, I did actually call him in the roll. I'm just, I got Whackler this time, so I thought I'd leave him out this time, see if anybody catches it. Mr. Cassidy? Thank you.
And as we, before we move on, we will welcome Councilmember Nelson as he comes into the chambers. Are there any additional council comments or questions on the amended ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero eight? Uh, seeing none, can we have a vote on the amended ordinance?
Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes, but point of order. Should we maybe reread the amendment before, uh, Councilmember Nelson votes on it?
And just a comment, I was listening to the meeting.
Oh, never mind, never mind.
I'm with you.
Proceed with the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
On a vote to six to zero, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero eight as amended passes. This moves us on to ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero nine, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by fourteen thousand, seventy nine dollars in the airport fund and fourteen thousand, seventy nine dollars in the Airport Improvements Capital Project Fund for the twenty nineteen runway rehabilitation project brought to us by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Uh, was that Councilmember Hutchings? Thank you. Second? Thank you, Councilmember Whackler. Uh, report from Mr. Cornelius, please.
Thank you. This is simply the companion ordinance to the previous legislation and appropriates, uh, the balance of the project out of the airport fund. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, uh, do we have anybody on Zoom? And no one on Zoom, it brings us, having no one else who wants to speak, the add is back before the council. Are there any council member comments? Seeing no council member comments or questions, um, I would like to call for the vote, please.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
On a vote of six yes, zero no, the ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero nine passes. It brings us to the third ordinance tonight, twenty twenty four zero one zero, amending section seventeen ten one thirty definitions, seventeen ten two six five, commercial district, and seventeen ten three three five landscaping to clarify and provide consistency with standards in Soldatna Municipal Code brought to us by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Nelson, thank you. And thank you. Second from Councilmember Hutchings. Uh, report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Um, Director Zarneski has a report on this item this evening.
Thank you. So this is a housekeeping item to correct some discrepancies we have within the zoning code. We noticed this problem over the last year when we had a couple of uh, storage yard conditional use permits come before the planning commission. The changes that are requested only address fences that are used to buffer things like storage yards, industrial uses and parking lots. They are not, this does not amend, uh, any other fence requirements within the city. There was some confusion at our last planning commission. Uh, but this again only addresses fencing that's used to buffer uses like storage yards. Right now we have specific requirements for storage yards in multiple sections of code. We have within our, uh, our commercial district section, we have one set of standards that describes fencing as decorative within our landscaping and calls it ornamental. Uh, the planning commission is recommending that we just clarify that and, uh, call them all decorative. Also, they are recommending a definition be, uh, included. There's also a variation in the height requirements in the commercial zoning district language currently, it calls for a six foot fence and in the landscaping and code, it calls for an eight foot fence. And again, here the commission recommended an eight foot fence because mainly we are seeing eight foot fences as, uh, when these uses are being fenced for security purposes, they want an eight foot fence rather than a six foot fence. The commission also recommends that some standards for barbed wire fencing be included. And what that would do is authorize them to allow for barbed wire fencing when there is a need for security. And then last, there was a requirement in landscape code that said that if you are going to install a fence, it could not be allowed along the street. And, uh, the recommendation here is to remove that requirement so that if someone is trying to provide security to their materials within the yard, they would be able to do that. And that is the end of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Zarneski. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this ordinance? Seeing no one in chambers and nobody by Zoom, it brings this back to the council. Are there any council comments or questions? Councilmember Carey?
Thank you, ma'am. I want to the administration and I'm not sure which one, but any and all. Have we had any members of the community with concerns about these changes?
Through the chair, Mr. Carey, uh, we have not had any comments, uh, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, with regard to this. We have not received any communication, uh, through our noticing and at this point, uh, nothing from the public.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Any other council member comments or questions? Seeing none, uh, call for the vote, please.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
On a vote of six yes, zero no, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four zero one zero passes Soldatna City Council. Brings us to ordinance twenty twenty four zero one one, approving a donation to Soldatna Little League and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by fifty thousand dollars in the general fund for this purpose brought to us by Mayor Whitney. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Second. Thank you, Councilmember Carey. I have a note from I have a note from Mayor Whitney, and I would like to read this for the record. If he were here tonight, he, this is what he would be addressing. First of all, he apologizes for being unable to be here after having a great vacation. Unfortunately, he picked up some bug on the way and he didn't want to spread it to all of us. Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Spring is here, at least I hope. And we're rapidly approaching the beginning of America's summer sport when we will all hear the familiar shout of play ball. The time when many of our local youth, both boys and girls, will run out on the field to play the sport we all love. For many years now, the Saldana Little League has maintained and expanded the fields in the baseball complex to provide a safe and nurturing environment for the children of Saldana and surrounding communities. Both of my children played on these fields, and now my grandchildren have the opportunity. I would venture to say most every one of us here tonight has sat in the bleachers watching our grandchildren, children, nieces and nephews play baseball. Some of you probably even played on those fields in good weather and not so good weather. The complex of fields has benefited our local youth for well over thirty years, and the Little League organization has done an excellent job in maintaining and expanding the field. But like all things, some of the structures and equipment have reached the end of their useful life. This past year witnessed the dugouts on the largest field where the high school teams and the more advanced players play deteriorate to the point of becoming a safety hazard. As a result, these two dugouts had to be removed and need to be replaced. At the same time, the protective covering on the top of all the field fences, providing a safety barrier for the players in the fields, needs to be replaced. The cost of these needed replacements far exceed the means of Little League organization. And as the baseball complex is owned by the city of Saldana, it is our best interest in the long run to finance the construction of these two dugouts and provide the safety protections on the fences. I urge you to support this one-time expenditure so a safe sporting activity can be provided for all of our local youth and adults. Who knows, the next great major league player may be starting to play T-ball this summer right here in Saldana. And that is the statement from Mayor Whitney. With, with that, um, report from the mayor, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If you would come forth, state your name, address, and you will have three minutes to make your comments.
Um, hi, my name is Sierra Cannon.
I think you can just read your letter.
Okay.
You're ten, they understand.
I had lots of fun at Saldana Little League because I got to have fun with new people and I made a lifelong friend named Alex. I also had fun because the umpires were fair and, and had no favoritism toward other teams. When I was not playing, I would help sweep the, the snack shack so I could show my gratitude toward Saldana Little League for being so fun and friendly. Thank you, Saldana Little League.
Very good, thank, thank you. Next person who wishes, anybody else that would like to speak?
One more heart string and we'll get, we'll get to the, the issue.
Hi, I'm Corey Cannon, and I wrote a little letter speaking on, uh, the Saldana Little League. Why I love Little League. I mean, we've all played ba, played baseball or seen baseball before. It, why we play is because you get to hit something with the bat as hard as you can and not get in trouble. See, I find that really fun. And you also get to throw a ball at a set target as hard as you can and don't break anything. Why I wrote this letter is to say that I love every detail of baseball. There's sprinting, the form, the random players that turn into good friends. I like, I love the umpiring. I will umpire for free if I have to. Whether I win or lose, pick up ball or Little League championship, I love the game just the same. That'll be all.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
All right, good evening. My name is Keith Pye, and, uh, my address, do you want P.O. Box or does it matter? Box, what's the technical? Does it matter? Box number?
It does not matter, sir. Whatever you'd like to put.
Three, four, five, two, Saldana, Alaska, nine, nine, six, six, nine. Good evening and thank you, uh, for giving Saldana Little League the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Keith Pye, and I serve the Saldana Little League Board and overseeing capital improvement projects. I have served on the Little League Board for the past seven years in various roles, the last being league president. When I assumed the role of president, I approached Tyson Cox about helping me to navigate working with the city and borough to bring attention to the needs of Saldana Little League. I want to thank him for his assistance. Saldana Little League was first chartered fifty-five years ago and has provided the children of this community the opportunity to play baseball and softball. The support we have received from this community and specifically the city of Saldana has been tremendous, and we can't thank you enough. The city staff I have been working with have always been very helpful and very supportive of what we are trying to do. From Jeanette, the city manager, to Joel at Parks and Rec and Scott and his crew in the maintenance department, and there are many, many others. And we couldn't do this without your support and without their support. From the stories I've been told regarding the past fifty-five years, our facilities have undergone quite a few changes, and we are again at a place of change. Many of the structures are well over thirty years old and have reached a point where repairing is no longer an option. Of the twenty-five wooden structures in our facility, eleven have been torn down in the last four years. Just last fall, we had five structures torn down and removed and had to replace a forty-foot shipping container that had failed. Because we are responsible for, uh, building and operating and maintaining those facilities, we are here tonight to ask the city for financial help to get us through this first phase of replacing those structures necessary for our program. The most pressing project, which Mayor Whitney had alluded to, is replacing those two dugouts and announcer booth on the baseball field closest to the sports center. That field is utilized by three separate organizations, Saldana Little League, Sohigh Baseball, and American Legion Baseball. That field alone will serve over one hundred of our young men and women this year, not including the visiting teams. From the day it is playable, which I was hoping was this week, until the end of September, that field will be used. We've spent twenty-six thousand dollars on this project to date and anticipate having to spend another sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to complete it. Sohigh's first home game of the season is May sixth, and we have committed to them that those two dugouts will be completed by then. I'm looking at the time, sorry. Uh, the second pressing need is to purchase and install new plastic fence topper, as Mayor Whitney, um, mentioned. And the cost of that, to get it shipped up here, is seventy-two hundred dollars. And last, uh, to help reduce the congestion?
Continue.
Thank you. And last, to help reduce the congestion we are experiencing on our fields due to an increased number of teams, we have purchased two suspended batting cage nets where coaches can take their teams to practice hitting and pitching in a safe enclosed environment. To prevent the kids from standing too close to the net on the outside, we need to enclose them in a chain link structure with gates that lock. The estimate we have to complete the chain link enclosures and the necessary dirt work is twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Any financial support that the city can provide to Saldana Little League will be used to help us address these three pressing facility needs. As a volunteer youth sports organization, we couldn't provide this opportunity to our kids without all of your support. Not only will these improvements benefit Saldana Little League, but it will have a direct impact on Saldana High School Baseball, Saldana High School Softball, and the American Legion Baseball Team. Until now, we have provided the free use of our facilities to these other programs. We are now asking them to pay a two thousand dollar facility use fee each year going forward to help us with these costs and future costs. This upcoming season, we currently have three hundred and fifty kids registered for our spring season. Sohigh Baseball has thirty-three players. Sohigh Softball, thirty-one players. And American Legion will have thirty-four players. This facility will serve over five hundred local children this summer and will host a minimum of thirty out-of-town teams. Last season, we were able to provide, free of charge, the first Challenger Division Program in the state of Alaska. The Challenger Division provides an opportunity for kids with disabilities to learn and play the sport of baseball in a safe environment. We would like to thank Tim Weekly and Jesse Dawkins for spearheading that effort and bringing that opportunity to the children of this community. Again, thank you for allowing us to address you this evening. This proposed ordinance will go a long way in helping us as we work to keep our facilities safe for our kids and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member have any questions? Councilmember Hutchings?
I would like to know, has the city ever given you any money?
As far as I'm aware of, I've only served on the board for seven years. I've lived here seventeen years. I can't speak of that specifically. In the seven years I've served on the board, we have not.
You have not?
I'm.
So the only thing you get is some snow blowing? Is that about it?
We, uh, we get snow blowings that our Sohigh baseball and softball teams can, uh, can play baseball and softball. And I would like to say, we had our softball team out on that soft, on that softball field here on Monday. So last year, we were shoveling that at, uh, April twenty-sixth. I think I have pictures of that, so.
Thank you.
It's been phenomenal. Thank you.
Any other council member, Carey?
Thank you, ma'am. To the best of your knowledge, of those three projects you've mentioned, with this fifty thousand dollars and obviously other funds you have access to, will those expenses be covered?
Those funds will allow us to complete those three projects.
Thank you.
And, um, and just to, to clarify, when, uh, the costs don't include labor on any of those, um, other than the dirt work, we'll have to have somebody come in with equipment. But, uh, we have a skilled set of volunteers and a, and a great group of volunteers that will do those projects for zero cost.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? So, yes, Councilmember Whackler?
Thank you. Through Vice Mayor. So City Parks and Rec is in full support of this, I assume?
I have been given that impression, yes.
Okay.
City manager?
Thank you for that question. Yes, and conversations that I've had with the director that if they were not doing the work that they're doing, the city would have to do the work, and we know that would be a greater cost because of the way we have to bid projects. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I have one, sir. In the summertime?
Mm-hmm.
When it comes to plowing infield and outfield, is that something that your organization does?
Yes, we do all of the maintenance down there from mowing grass to dragging and prepping the infield surfaces, weed trimming, probably a couple of miles. I didn't do the actual math, but all of the chain link fencing that surrounds those fields, um, the grass likes to go right there. So, um, and all of that is done with volunteer. We do volunteer labor. We do, uh, we do own the field maintenance equipment. We've got, uh, lawn mowers, four-wheelers, uh, lawn tractors, things that, that allow us to do that.
And one, one final question. I recall there's five, six fields there. How many fields are there?
We, we currently have a total of eight fields and seven baseball, one softball. And I apologize, I was gonna get a number, but Saldana High School has two softball teams. And I think registered right now, we have, I think, approximately seven softball teams. The young ladies in this community, we've really strived hard to, to get those opportunities to play softball. And we've got a really big problem with one softball field and probably ten to eleven teams trying to utilize that one field.
And those softball teams are both for kids and adults?
It is, it is strictly for, um, Saldana Little League players. And, um, it is, um, Saldana High School. And we have had, uh, an adult softball, uh, team utilize that field also.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Is there anyone else?
Thank you.
Who wishes to testify on ordinance 2024 011?
Hi, my name is Billy Cannon, four eight five five zero, Grant Avenue, Kenai. Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having us today. I'm just gonna expand a little bit on what Keith was saying. So first off, the Challenger Program. This is the first and only Challenger Program for special need kids ever in the state of Alaska. So to, to be, it's a really big deal. We have a couple of members who have very vested interests with their children in this. And we've actually just contacted the Special Olympics, and we're in, we're in talks with their representative out of Anchorage right now. And so this has the potential to be a very big focal point in this state on providing opportunities for special need kids, which I think is great. Number two, uh, he, he said, uh, we had three hundred and fifty kids. I looked this morning, we're over three eighty. So we're at about five hundred and fifty kids that we provide services for with the fields. And not to mention, we have, we have back-to-back state championships, which is pretty awesome. And can't play chess at the high school level if we're giving them checkers pieces. So that's, that's our passion. That's our goal, is for us to develop and put Saldana on the map statewide in athletics, because we deserve to be. Our, our community is pretty amazing. Number three, the, uh, the number, the money and labor for our facilities that, that we just flat-out don't own. Now, if we were a regular business, all of our capital projects and our infrastructure, we could capitalize. We could show as assets for our company and go to a bank and get a loan, because now we have assets to, to leverage. But we don't, we don't own anything. And so we have nothing, nothing to leverage. So we can't get a loan. And so our options for funding are very, very limited. And just to give an idea on how much Keith has done and how much we've spent out of our own pockets in the last four years, and eighty percent of this is the last two years, is we have spent a hundred and five thousand and four hundred dollars, and which has completely depleted any savings or CDs investments that we had. And we're now looking to pull more, some money out of CDs to liquidate so we can, because we made a promise to Saldana High School, we're, we're gonna keep it. I mean, I don't care if I have to pay it out of my own pocket. That's our responsibility. We take that serious. And, um, I didn't want to overwhelm you with people here. I know it's not a very big room. And, but on the drop of a hat, we can have two hundred kids in here. We have, every single week, we have four open gyms, four sessions of open gyms. We have roughly two hundred kids attending. So out of respect for you guys, I didn't want to bring that on you. I run open gyms and it is a madhouse. So, so it's, we feel it's very important because of how many people we influence in our program.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Are there any questions from council members?
Oh, and I'm, I'm the president, so I was supposed to say that. Not my wheelhouse here.
You told, when you came and introduced yourself to us, you told us that.
I did. Yeah, I'm, I'm more of hitting pitching coach, not city council speaking.
So any questions from council members? Seeing none, thank you, sir, for your testimony. Is there anyone else here in the chambers that would wish to testify on this? Come forward and state your name, address for the record, please.
I'm Kenneth Gibson. I'm the current, uh, Sohigh Baseball Coach, uh, Head Coach and, um, three, four, seven, six, five, uh, Silverweed Street. I like a lot of volunteers and people that lived here, worked about ten years in Little League League as a volunteer and coaching, um, with, following my son up through the Little League program, and, um, we have a challenging environment in Saldana, we want to compete, and, uh, just to put together an All-Star team and go up to Anchorage and compete with them, uh, that's like a 10-day experience where you go and live in, uh, a church somewhere, and, uh, sleep on the floor with the kids and try and get, uh, people to have time off from work to go do that, so they can coach these teams. And, uh, we have an amazing community, because all of this stuff is supported with donations that we get from, uh, businesses and people and, uh, uh, Little League through the funding that they've, uh, always had. And our kids, uh, just thrive on that, when we can do that, when we provide that, the growth we see in the sport, um, but also just with the kids and that experience that lives with them forever. Um, we've seen a big resort, re, resurgence of, uh, sports in this community, especially in Saldana, ever since, um, 2020. Uh, coming back from 2020 is, everybody's wanted to get outside, and, uh, it's fantastic to see, is the, the growth of Little League recently, um, uh, and the effort of all these, uh, fine people that, um, volunteer their time. Uh, I always did it, uh, I found that it was relaxing for me to go do something completely different, be focused on those kids for a couple hours a day, uh, practicing and, and doing that, so I, I certainly got a tremendous value out of doing all that volunteering. Um, and then I had a great opportunity in 2020, uh, to retire and, uh, started coaching at the high school level, and Legion ball as well. So we do, um, uh, we'll be on those fields as soon as they're not mud, and we'll be there every day that we're not traveling, uh, with two separate teams, we've got, uh, 33 kids on our high school program, we have 14 kids on our, uh, uh, actually, we just lost a kid, so yeah, 33. We have 14 kids on our varsity and 19 kids on our JV, and we carry a very large JV team just so we can have extra kids to, uh, we carry, we'll play an extra game a week, just within inner squad games, to, uh, increase our competition level. But, uh, as like with all sports in the community, it's a constant effort just to raise money and participate. But, uh, it's also, Ben, it's like the last few weeks, I've been helping Keith, um, build out of the facilities, and people are coming out from, they just see something going on, and they're excited, they're very excited to see something happening, so, uh, I just wanted to share that with you and the great work that everybody in Saldana Little League's continuing to do to support our, uh, programs. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. Any questions from council members?
He's got questions.
Seeing none, thank you, sir, for your testimony. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to testify on ordinance 2024-011? Yes, ma'am, please come forth.
Hi, my name's Adrian Harold, um, I live at 198 Trumpeter Avenue in Saldana. Um, I am on the board for the Saldana Little League, I am the, uh, Information Officer, I basically run the Facebook page. Um, I was born and raised in Saldana, and 30 years ago, I spent every summer, my entire summer, on the ballfields, and this past season, the structures that Keith was talking about being torn down, those were there when I was there 30 years ago, and it's bittersweet to watch, you know, to see that, um, you know, it kind of reminds you of time ticking, but it also shows you the growth that we're having in our community. And, um, you know, growing up on those fields, my parent, my dad was, um, Board President for a few years, my brother, um, his All-Star team, they went out of state a couple times, and that's how, one of their players was, um, an Oakland A, it's like, they went to the majors, it's absolutely exciting, and now, you know, I have my sons playing, and I've got two behind them coming in the rears, um, that are still too young to play, but to see the growth and the commitment that the community has for Little League is just heartwarming, and it, it's refreshing in the times today, because so much is changing, to have that stability and that constant love for baseball and softball is wonderful to see. Um, I do want to touch base on the Challenger Program again, because it's so important and it's so fantastic. Um, last night, I volunteered to be the Board Point Person for the Challenger Program, and to have these kids come from all over the state, I called, uh, Seward and Homer today to invite any of their players to come down, because it, it's statewide, any player can come down on the Saturdays and participate in the games. But it's important to have safe and accessible fields and stands. Um, these kids are, you know, they have special needs, cross-the-gambit, physical, emotional, um, so it's really important to have those accommodations in place. So, I just am putting that out there, how important and how amazing Little League is in general, and then to have this one and only program, the Challenger Program, in Saldana is pretty amazing. Instead of Anchorage, it's wonderful to be able to offer that, so, thank you.
Any questions from council members? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Anyone else in chambers? Tyson Cox, please come forth, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Uh, Tyson Cox, 237 West Reed Out. Um, I was just gonna talk first a little bit about how baseball and softball are summer sports, and I don't know if that gets thought about quite enough. For me, as a kid, I, I was raised, uh, most of my life in a single-family home, or a single-parent home, and with that is my, my mom worked most of the time, and baseball was a big part of my summer. It probably kept me out of a lot of trouble that I would have been in if I wasn't at the ballfields, either they're, um, with my team, or they're goofing around with my friends, we were always down there doing something. And it, it really was something to think about, because, not that other sports aren't important, they're very important, but with school, you have a lot of your time taken up in the wintertime, in the summer. Trust me, there's a lot of time, even with baseball, to get into trouble if you, if you're sometimes looking for it, so, anyways, it's just something to think about. Um, so I think baseball's pretty great, but I also, what's even better is, uh, over the years, I've watched Saldana, and Saldana has had a continuing dedication to athletics and exercise, and especially youth, youth athletic programs and opportunities. Um, we can see that in the improvements made to the Sports Center, we can see that in the new addition of our, our Field House that's coming, we can see that in the continued, um, funds that are given each year to Salteshi for the trails, and then hopefully we'll see that with these, uh, Little League fields and the improvements that can be made there. Um, I just, I just am imagining in my mind what a great, what a compliment this will be to our new Field House and our Sports Center complex, to have these fields over there that are getting upgraded and looking just as beautiful as our new facilities will. I just think it will be, um, a wonderful area for people to come and visit and to use all of those facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cox? Seeing none. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to testify on ordinance 2024-11? Seeing none, do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to testify? That brings us back before the council, are there any council questions or comments? Whose hand was, it's hard to see, okay, count, no, the computer screen's getting in the way. Councilmember Hutchins?
So, I'm almost embarrassed. We have people that come in here every year asking for $5,000, and, you know, we give it to them because it's for the kids or for, it's a benefit for the community. So the fact that we've never given, or at least not in the last seven to 10 years, I feel really bad, and, uh, these are definitely legitimate expenses that need to be taken care of, and so I will be voting to support this.
Thank you. Other?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Parker, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that came out here and all the work that you do to make this such a wonderful asset in our community and a, a wonderful resource for our kids. Um, I, I fully support this, but I'd like to speak a little bit just to the contribution you're, you're making to the, uh, the properties there, you know, as, as it's been mentioned, this is a city-owned property, and we are incredibly fortunate that we have your organization to continue to develop it and prove it and just take care of it. There's not been an insignificant amount of money that's gone into that, I think it was mentioned earlier tonight, that there is over $100,000 that's been spent by your organization on continuing to improve that land. Um, and again, that's, that is land that if that organization was not there taking care of, that would fall on our city-run Parks and Recreation Department to bear the cost of running that, and as our city manager meant, had mentioned, we can't do projects like this for the level of cost that you're able to do, because you have volunteer resources to do it with. Comparatively, the city of Kenai, they manage their ballfields, they bear those costs, and I was trying to figure out what the, uh, the costs of those are, and just kind of cruising through some of their most recent budgets, the most recent line item I could find was $75,000 that they were most recently spending on their fields, and here we have you spending over $100,000 of your own money, plus, uh, taking this that we'd be putting in and matching it with all the labor, this is a steal of a deal from our community, if you just look at it from a financial perspective, not to mention the value that it provides to the kids, so, without hesitation, we'll be supporting this, and just wanted to say thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Councilmember Nelson?
So I'm kind of a little bit ignorant of things, which I, I'm learning tonight, and I do want to thank, because I, till very recently, just kind of assumed this was something we took care of with our Parks Rec Department, I did not have any idea that it was volunteer labor, and I, I would like to thank folks, it's, it's an amazing difference when groups or organizations bring something to the table. You get asked for a lot of stuff in, in these chairs, so, so my thanks to you. I do have a question I'd like to ask administration, just to clarify for me, so, um, this is, I think maybe unusual, this might not be an arrangement we have in any other of our facilities, so we obviously own this facility, the land at least, do we have, is this just simply leased to the Little League? Could you maybe just brief me a little bit on, on what the legal or contractual arrangement is on this?
We do have a lease with the Little League group.
And if I could just follow up, is, is, does that lease indicate maintenance is, is their responsibility, is that a?
Correct.
Line item?
That is correct.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Any other questions from, uh, Councilmember Whackler?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I want to reiterate what everybody else has already said, um, but it's an asset to the community, I think. It's totally fine.
He just got it.
Totally fine. Mine beeped earlier, it happens, all of us. Um, yes, the, the structure that we have set up, um, with you guys doing all of the maintenance and stuff yourselves, um, and being able to provide the number of volunteers to do that says a lot about your organization, it says that people are invested in it, and I think that we should help invest in it, so, I will also be in favor.
Councilmember Carey?
Thank you. I'm, uh, for Ziver. Everything everyone said is, I absolutely agree, again, a huge amount, and I think almost every one of us, if we could, would vote a couple times yes, but we only get one yes. I'm a former special services, special needs teacher for this district, and I have numerous nephews who have special needs. One of the many outstanding things about ball is that the outreach in this community, as well as in Kenai, to reach those special needs individuals. I just want to say how very much I appreciate the work you're doing, all the volunteering, all the funds, all those things, but you give dignity to people who seldom, or at least it seems that way, are shown dignity that you provide, and so I just, I greatly thank you, um, and I hope you'll come back and ask for more funds as you have needs. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? So, uh, before I call for the vote, I would like to say, um, probably when Aaron was playing, my son was playing T-ball in Little League, and then he decided golf, he liked golf better than, than baseball, and, and he became very good out here at our little nine-hole course, so, um, we are, we are fortunate here in our town, as was brought out, that we do have a community that is dedicated to, to sports and providing the facilities that we need and our kids need, so that we can have a healthy community. The Challenger Program sounds extremely exciting, and as it gets underway, um, having had a, a brother who was special needs, um, who absolutely loved participating in sports and excelled, um, I would be willing, willing to help when you get that program underway. Uh, question for the administration before I call for the vote, the length of the lease that Little League has with the city, how long is that lease?
I am looking to the director, because I do not have that, Parks and Rec Director, and/or I believe they have it over there in front of them.
Okay, we'll, we'll all be gone, we'll all be gone by the time it expires, so that's, that's good. Um, so, any other questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, can we have a vote, please?
Hutchins?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
On a vote to six to nothing, ordinance 2024-011 passes Saldana City Council appropriating $50,000 to the Saldana Little League, so, there you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Come see us more often. In all the years I have been on the council, and early 2000s and more recently, 13 years, Saldana Little League has never come before the council, so really, um, please come back, particularly as we get the Field House done, and that'll give you guys the opportunity to do things in the wintertime, when you can't do them in the summertime, so, thank you. That brings us to the next ordinance, ordinance 2024-012, increasing estimated revenue and appropriations by $125,000 in the General Fund, and $125,000 in the Parks and Rec Capital Projects Fund for the consultation services to implement the Saldana Riverfront Development Plan. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchins, second. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. May I have a report from the administration, please?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, Director Zarneski has the report for this, this evening.
Thank you. Um, this ordinance before you is to provide funding to implement the recently adopted Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. We'd like to capitalize on the momentum, the progress that we've had over the past two years, and, uh, hire someone at this point to fill the role of the Riverfront Project Manager. Um, they would coordinate, manage, uh, execute the plan as, as it's, uh, prescribed within, within the document. We envision, at this point, a consultant working very closely with the administration, with council, with the Planning Commission, they would, uh, initiate, maintain communication with all of our partners, that includes our, our landowners, our business owners, our nonprofit folks, the different agencies that we need to work with. We would, uh, expect the consultant to develop a strategy and schedule for implementing Phase One, um, of the, of the project, we would expect them to formulate and execute strategies to pursue additional studies, uh, a couple of those were the regional housing analysis, and another was the public market analysis, and, uh, in addition, uh, we would be looking for their guidance and, uh, their expertise on identifying funding strategies, funding opportunities, and then, and strategies as well, and that'll, I'll wrap it up there and take any questions.
Thank, thank you for that report. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? I see no one in council chambers, do we have anyone? And no one through Zoom. Uh, seeing no one that would, wishes to speak, it's back before the council, are there any council comments or questions? Councilmember Carey?
Thank you. To the administration. My sense of this is that possibly this is the beginning My sense of this is that possibly this is the beginning of what will be an ongoing new position in the city. My first question would be, how long would you expect this consultant to be contracted by us to make decisions and to come back and suggestions? And what do you see as a long-term need for the city to develop the project?
So as far as the position, it would be truly a consultant position, meaning that it would be a fee and there are not benefits. So technically, there's not a position on our books, but the consultant, so it'd be a contract. I am going to, we've talked about a timeframe really this next year and then quite honestly, look at it moving forward. It really is dependent on the movement made and the opportunities that present themselves. We're hopeful that, you know, we can find funding for, you know, the phases or whatever comes forward and that a consultant is going to be instrumental one in finding the funding and then bringing the partners all together. So I can't give you an exact timeframe other than at least one year and perhaps longer. But along the way, there'll be reports and updates of progress and we'll continue to evaluate and make decisions.
Yes, follow up?
Yes. Would it be reasonable to assume possibly that as this individual finds more funds to help with this project, some of those more funds might actually go also to fund this position on an ongoing basis?
That could, if the grants funds allowed, then yes, we would take that opportunity to fund the consultant position that way.
And yes, Councilmember Hutchins?
So this person that's going to do this, is this going to be somebody local or are you working with a company outside? A consulting company or just how is this going to be handled?
It will be put out to bid and then evaluated from there. Part of the criteria and if I, if you need to add any information, please do so. It will be the experience, the experience, Saldana experience of this area. So that's part of the criteria.
Do you want to add anything, Mr. Zarneski?
I would just echo city manager's comments that we are looking for someone that knows the community, knows this project and that can interact well with our businesses and with our landowners and that can communicate well, coordinate well. And that person, you know, might be within the community. It might be someone from Seward. It might be someone from Anchorage, but we're hoping and we're looking for someone with those specific skills that can quickly step into the position and work with our local businesses.
Thank you. Any, yes, Councilmember Nelson?
Just a comment. I appreciate this step. I would like to just compliment administration for doing this because I would like to reiterate what I've said previously about this project. I think it is too large in scope and too complicated for existing staff to try and take on while not in order to keep their other duties and other projects on task. So I would be interested, obviously, in just seeing how this goes. I don't know if this amount is enough. If it's not, you know, that's obviously up to the procurement process. But I think it's a good step in the right direction and, you know, whatever comes out of that, whether that's a long-term contract, whether that's a position, it probably is the right step if we are going to go forward with these things. So I'll just be interested in seeing that and thank you for bringing it forward.
Councilmember Whackler?
So I just had a question about sort of the steps. If we appropriate $125,000 for this and then it goes out to bid, is that, would that be? How many years would that be for? Like just one year or is the, like I'm trying to figure out what the, yeah.
I'm going to look to that end of the table.
Yeah, thank you for the question to the Vice Mayor. So the steps that we would undertake if this appropriation is made is we would solicit for competitive proposals. The RFP that we put together would establish evaluation criteria that we deem appropriate to select a consultant to best deliver on the objectives and the scope of work that we establish in that RFP. Amongst the deliverables and tasks that are identified, we'll receive, you know, competitive proposals. We'll likely establish a one-year period of performance for that initial contract. If things, and we do expect things could change because it's, as you guys are aware, the Riverfront Redevelopment Project has select objectives, but certainly things could change. As Councilmember Carey noted, one of those tasks is to seek funding opportunities and to pursue those at the direction of the city, probably some phased notice to proceed on aspects like that. So one-year period of performance, we'll solicit for competitive proposals. We'll establish selection criteria based on the tasks and objectives identified in the proposal.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? I did note in the Riverfront Development Plan where, and read through that part of the plan that talks about the implementation and that this is the first step and then it identifies subsequent steps. But this is the critical first step. So seeing no other council member comments, can we have a vote, please?
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. On a vote of six to zero, ordinance 2024-012 passes Saldana City Council. Brings us to ordinance 2024-013, amending Saldana Municipal Code, Section 2.28.100 Holidays, brought to us by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Second? Thank you, Councilmember Whackler. Report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. This ordinance is coming before you to codify really what has been done. It actually puts it into the code to allow us to continue. But it really came up because of the Christmas Eve holiday, and thank you for that Christmas Eve holiday, where it caused some issues within departments that are open on a non-standard work week. I'm going to signal out one department, that being Parks and Rec. It caused some issues with how time sheets and time off was calculated on the time sheet. So this actually allows the director to create an alternate holiday for whichever. I do know that the director worked hard to allow his employees to have four consecutive days off during that timeframe. However, our code wouldn't allow that. So this actually allows that flexibility for the employees and the director for scheduling.
Thank you for that report. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this ordinance? Seeing no one in the chambers, anybody on Zoom and no one on Zoom, this item is now back before the council. Are there any council comments or questions? Seeing no hands raised, may we call for the vote, please?
Hutchins?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. On a vote to six to zero, ordinance 2024-013 has passed the city council. Brings us to ordinance 2024-014, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $24,000 in the Homeland Security Grant Fund for a grant received from the state of Alaska, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for Cybersecurity, brought to us by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact, please? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchins. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. A report from the administration, please.
Thank you. This, as stated in the title, is a grant that the city received and it will be used for cybersecurity risk assessment. The funds will be used for that purpose.
Thank you for that report. Are there, is there anybody in public that would like to testify on this ordinance? Seeing no one in chambers and no one on Zoom, this item is now back before the council. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Carey?
Thank you. To the administration, I'm not sure to whom. Risk assessment is an interesting term because it can be very small. There is none or there's huge everywhere. And as long as I'm not breaking rules anywhere in terms of security. Are there any particular areas where the administration is particularly concerned in terms of risk assessment, you know, with cyber issues? And if it's something we can't discuss here, I understand. But again, I'm just be interested, this is not a lot of money as compared to what it could be to do this. And so could you give me a little more elaboration on the need, how these funds are going to be used? I didn't mean need. Need is clear.
Right. As far as a specific area, I honestly can't say speak to a specific area because literally every day there's a cyber risk and it's new. And so this actually, it will help to evaluate our system and where our risks are and identify them and then work with, then we'll continue to work with the IT department to resolve those risks.
And obviously you'll bring back to us what you find out. Thank you.
If I can, because.
I understand.
Yes.
Are there any, yes, Councilmember Chilson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. I can actually speak in depth to this one. I'm working in IT at the school district with a lot of my role being related to cybersecurity and actually going through this exact same grant process. What I can say is that this is something that regardless of where you are as an organization with your risk exposure, it has tremendous value, as our city manager is saying, for just identifying any potential risk areas that you might have overlooked because a lot of IT departments don't have cybersecurity specialists on staff. It's a very specialized field. So this gives the city the ability to bring in a team that very much specializes in that area and provides a lot of additional value on that front. Additionally, this is a value add or value multiplier, I should say, and that it really opens the door for a lot of additional grant funding opportunities and that a lot of cybersecurity grants these days require that you have completed a cybersecurity risk assessment. So if we can complete this and then identify areas that this report has targeted for potential improvement, we can go after subsequent grant opportunities as a city to fund those rather than us having to bear those full costs ourselves.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, can we call for the vote, please?
Whackler?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. On a vote six to zero, ordinance 2024-014 has passed the Saldana City Council. Brings us to our last ordinance for public hearing tonight, ordinance 2024-015, adopting Saldana Miss Code Chapter 13.22, changing tables in city facilities, brought to us by Councilmember Chilson. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Chilson and Councilmember Hutchins.
Yep.
May I have a report from Councilmember Chilson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. What I say is some issues that we deal with as a council don't often come to light and this is one of the ones that I wouldn't have known about if I hadn't personally experienced it. I would share my story here in that I'm a relatively new parent and it's been an incredible journey so far, but it's definitely been a learning process for me. And one of the things that I have learned is that changing table accessibility is not always where you need it to be, especially if you are a new dad. And I was surprised to see that in our facilities, we have some out there that whack changing tables in all bathrooms. And that is unfortunately a thing that puts an undue burden on mothers where they are required to bear the burden of that or puts fathers in an awkward position where they have to go try to change a diaper on a bathroom stall floor and it's not ideal. So in working with city administration, we were able to put together some potential code changes that would help correct that situation by requiring all new construction for city facilities and renovation of city facilities to have equitable distribution of changing tables. And then also, in addition to making sure that we have them accessible for all genders, also taking a look at making them accessible for people of different abilities and just correcting that situation. So anyway, I appreciate support on this one tonight.
Thank you for that. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? I see no one here in chambers and no one on Zoom. Brings it back before the council. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call for the vote?
Hutchins?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. On a vote of six to zero, ordinance 2024-015 has been adopted by the city council. That completes our ordinances for public hearing tonight. Brings us to new business and those are all on the consent agenda. And then we have the, next is the mayor and council reports. The mayor is not here. I know he did have a good vacation and it's unfortunate that he got a bad head cold and was not here tonight to see the ordinance get adopted on Saldana Little League. Brings us to council reports. Councilmember Chilson, April 3, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Thank you again. So at the April 3 Planning and Zoning Meeting, we had two primary items on the agenda for that evening, the first of which was Resolution PZ 2024-007, which would have been, which would be addressing a conditional use permit for Riverside Assisted Living for the construction of a expansion at that facility, which would support an additional 22 residential units for long-term care. This had some additional complexities because it falls within the Kenai River Overlay District or K-Rod. So there is quite an in-depth presentation given to this and just special considerations that go with that, including a submission of an erosion protection plan. The commission did vote to support that. Additionally, the second item that spent a number of, second item that required a number of, sorry, I'm trying to, the second item they're looking at that evening was the presentation on a planned unit development or PUD. This is basically where you have a large tract of land and a developer coming in that wants to work with the city on subdividing that and really tailoring it for a large-scale developments. And the last one that we've done as a city was sometime back, it was Mountain Rose Estates. And there's actually one that's being looked at for going in directly behind that neighborhood at this point in time. That was presented to the commission for their consideration. I think they're supportive of that as well. So that concludes my report. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Chilson? Seeing none, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, city manager's report. City manager?
Thank you. I included in your packet a memo from the finance director regarding the sales tax update that she previously provided. And she dug in further to find out, to figure out the discrepancy, why the, really the decrease in the taxable sales, because to her, the methodology didn't make sense. So she contacted the borough and worked through that and the year in fact was not that much of a decrease. Based on the corrections, the taxable sales decreased by 2.4% rather than the 5.48, excuse me, rather than the 9.68. So very thankful for her work on that and we will continue to report sales tax revenues as they come forward.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Carey?
Thank you. I'm just wondering after just a huge discrepancy and error by the borough, can we trust the numbers we're getting now?
Melanie always raises questions when she has them and I'm quite certain she will continue to do so when she sees something out of the ordinary and even in the ordinary.
Any other questions for the city manager? Seeing none, that brings us to item 12, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any item at this time?
Just to give you guys a little more information, our opening day.
Just to give you guys a little more information, our opening day is May 18th, 11:00 a.m. There's hot dogs, drinks, food, 400 kids with bats. Who wouldn't want to be part of that? So that's our opening ceremonies. And every Saturday after May 18th at 4:00 p.m. will be the Challenger Program Game. If you guys know anybody who fits the description, who can benefit from this program, it is everybody from six years old through 21 years old, if they're still in school. So please reach out to their communities, friends, family, whoever you know, to provide this opportunity to join the game we love so much. That's about it. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to comment on anything at this time? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing no one, that brings us to Councilmember Comments. And I would like to first start with our student representative, Councilmember Cassidy.
All right. I do have a few things here. First off, I'm so happy that we are getting sun now. And I'm really tired because I haven't gotten this much sun in a long time. Well, the public school program is coming to a close within the next month. I'm excited for it. The rest of my peers are excited for it. Along with that, our track, baseball and softball programs, along with others, have started and are continuing. And I'm excited to get to know those programs and hear results from them. Just a few things that I wanted to bring up for anyone either in this room or listening on Zoom or who would ever listen to this recording. There is a Carnival of Hope being hosted on the 20th of April. It is, sorry, I'm trying to articulate my words in a way. The idea behind it is a festival where volunteers are able to serve members of the community, specifically adults with special needs. And this will be going from 11:00 to 4:00. Volunteers are asked to sign up using a Google spreadsheet and I can give the link to anyone who wants it. But you can sign up for a single hour or all the hours and then there are different jobs and roles that can be played. So if you would be interested or anyone you know, any youth that would be interested in volunteering and helping out with this, just reach out to me and I can get you guys the link. The other thing is I've been talking to my teammates. For one, I'm on the Saldana High School Track and Field Team. I'm excited to compete with them. I've been talking to my teammates and my coaches about the field house. And we are all really excited about this field house. The one thing that has been brought up, and I know that it's, this is just a minor detail, but for those members of the community who would like to train throughout the winter, the 90-degree turns on that track will prove both cumbersome and make those trainees injury prone. The reason a track is curved is to avoid that angle and it will spare the knees of whoever is running. So if there's any way that we could, not necessarily change the blueprints because that would be expensive and time-consuming and no one wants to spend more time on this. But if there's any way we could get a tangent line route marked in addition to the normal lanes, I think that would really help anyone who wishes to both run in the winter inside and spare their legs. That really concludes what I had written down. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you for that input. I saw Kyle making copious notes there. So we are going to go next to Councilmember Hutchins.
Well, just like the rest of us, we're happy for sun, we're happy for melting. And I'm very happy that we were able to assist the Saldana Little League so that they can have not only a good facility, but be able to handle the challenge. I think that is an incredible opportunity for our area. And other than that, I'm fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Very good meeting and apologies for my tardiness. They say something about best laid plans and modern travel is a little bit unpredictable. So sorry about that.
It's good to have you here. Councilmember Chilson?
No comments tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Carey?
No comment.
Thank you. And Councilmember Whackler?
No comment.
Thank you. Couple of comments from myself. The mayor asked me today to attend a meeting that Mayor Machiki was hosting with the city of Kenai, city of Saldana and representatives from Alaska Energy Authority. Their director, Curtis Thayer, was here in town. And he wanted to meet with the borough and the cities to talk about projects that the Energy Authority is working on here on the peninsula that are particular to our area. One is the SSQ Transmission Upgrade. And I know Councilmember Carey is probably familiar with this for all the years he was on the HGA board. And this is a project that is currently underway. And then some that are planned coming up. The Dixon Diversion Project, that is one where they will divert water over to Bradley Lake. They will raise the height of the dam at Bradley Lake and they'll be able to generate additional power from that. That one is going to start the permitting work this summer. And they are working on funding opportunities and deciding which is going to be the best way to go. And then the last one is a submarine HVDC line and then the best storage, the battery energy supply systems like we have out here at Boundary and Sterling Highway. And again, this is a, this is probably of the projects that are underway. This is one that will take the longest and be the most complicated. It was, it was an interesting meeting. They talked about the line loss and the line loss between Saldana and Sterling is one of the largest and that is an area where they will be looking to upgrade. The other interesting thought, fact that came up was Bradley Lake, as we know, provides energy throughout the rail belt system through the system that we have. But 17% of the power being generated from Bradley Lake does go to Fairbanks. So interesting. And so that was, that was a good thing underway. Overall, total for all these projects, he's just under a billion, $900 million for all of those projects. I wanted to extend to Mayor Barup's family. Mayor Barup unfortunately has had some medical issues and let him know that he and his family are in our thoughts and we wish him a speedy recovery. And just before closing out, we also want to wish our City Manager a happy birthday today as it is her birthday. So with that, that's Councilmember Comments. Executive session, there is none. Meeting announcements, April 15th, the Library Advisory Board Meeting meets at 5:15. April 24th is our next Saldana City Council Meeting, 6 o'clock here in council chambers. With that, these meetings-